She's with Missouri Institute of Public Health. She'll be doing, talking about the strategic plan today.
Remind you.
Name again. Taylor Anderson.
Taylor, welcome.
Nice to meet you. Thank you.
Glad you're here.
Yeah, thanks. Glad to be here.
It was really fun this whole few months because we had Taylor and Taylor and it was just.
Taylor Square.
Introductions part of the thing now that we're, our meeting has started.
No worries. Thank you. Thank you. We will go ahead and call the meeting to order. If I could see the agenda there while I reviewed the packet, nice long packet, by the way. Normally I allocate an hour, but this was longer today. So, all right, so we've called the meeting to order. I'd like to do roll call. Susan?
Present.
Michael Chaffé present.
Zach Gronke present.
Zach Gronke present. Anyone else online? We got, I expect our Kingsley to join us shortly. So, we have a quorum. We will proceed with meeting. I'd like to go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible.
And justice for all. All right, so we have, would you like to go ahead and, would you like to introduce our guest?
Sure. So with us today, we have Taylor Anderson with Missouri Public Health Institute. She'll be discussing our strategic plan here later on during the agenda.
Excellent. And I see we have Mr. Ryan on as a guest. Any other guests that need to be identified here that are online?
It's Alex Qualieri from Deviant Cava.
Oh, great. Alex, glad you're here.
And Wes Frey also is listening in from Deviant Cava.
Understood. Thank you. Let's go ahead and we will, I don't see where we have time for public comments on there yet.
It's at the bottom.
Okay.
Can you hang on one second? Dr. Kingsley.
Having some logistical issues there. That's fine. Let's just take a moment to review the board minutes from August. Approval of past minutes, July 17th. Has everybody had a chance to review those?
Yes.
Anyone have any questions? None? I entertain a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote, Susan?
Yes.
Michael Chaffé, yes?
Zach Gronke, yes.
Yes. All right. And we will have Dr. Kingsley soon. So we need to approve the past minutes from August 13th executive session.
Just after you approve the minutes, I might suggest moving the public comments up.
I like that because I was thinking the same thing. We need to move our public comments up and.
That way, I think there are several people probably from, that might want to speak.
Absolutely.
Or you have your Cava and kratom policy discussion.
Yes. We will move to public comments as soon as we approve the minutes from the executive session.
Motion to approve the minutes from August 13th, 2025.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Susan Cole, yes.
Michael Chaffé, yes?
Zach Gronke, yes.
All right, it passes. We will move into public comments. Dr. Kingsley has asked me to run the meeting. I'd like to, before we open up public comments and discussion, Taylor and Alex, quite frankly, we've, we've got a lot of stuff to go over. There will, we are going to allow the public comments, of course. I believe, in my opinion, as current vice chairman, that extensive discussions on this matter may be best held at a separate meeting to where there can be a lot of back and forth and plenty of time. But we are going to certainly open this up to the public comments. There are some complex, very detailed issues that we have to wrestle with here and discuss. And I'm just going to predicate this upon, I am personally, as a member of the board, willing to meet with you and any representatives to go over the logistics, the rationale, the findings, and some of the, how we arrived where we were and how the board has, depending on what the board does today with its actions, I think five minutes of public comments will never be enough for this level of a subject matter. So I want to first predicate this by saying, I think we're happy to meet and go into lots of details about where we're at on everything down the road. So having said that, and I want to encourage a separate meeting here if, if you all are willing, and I'm willing anytime. I don't speak for the board with these comments. I am encouraging as a board member to have another meeting or discussion. If it needs to be an official meeting with the majority of the board, we can deal with that. But I want to lay out for you that we may, I don't believe we're going to have enough time to adequately discuss and go over everything. But we certainly want to open this up for public comments. And you know, I'm very willing and enthusiastic to have discussions on this outside of the board meeting format. So having said that, I would like to open this up for public.
This is Taylor Ryan. I'd like to address the board.
Please proceed.
Thank you. I come to you again today with the hopes of convincing the board, if I'm understanding the proposal correctly, to vote no on this proposal that will further limit Deviant Cava's business and prevent us from selling even retail versions of natural kratom products. Last month, we begrudgingly agreed to a proposal that prevented us from serving our two flagship beverages, both Cava and kratom tea, but did allow us to sell them as retail products. So these are pre-canned beverages bought from various third-party distributors across the country and are sold in a canned format that none of the staff touches and therefore sort of removes it outside of the purview of being a food establishment issue. And this new proposal twists the knife, if it were, by even saying that we can't sell retail versions of these products, which seems to go against a lot of the discussion last month in which the board emphatically said, you know, we have no problem with the retail products because that's outside of the purview of the health department and they're being sold everywhere. And now that decision appears to be reversed. This new proposal, I, I believe, is based on a misunderstanding of recent FDA actions. The FDA in the past month has started a crusade against seven hydroxy metrogynine, also known as 7OH, which our company is also an opponent of. We think that this product is dangerous and it shouldn't be on American shelves. This is a synthetically derived byproduct of the natural kratom plant. And I, I hope that everyone on the board understands the distinction between these two products because that's very important. And I don't think that if you can acknowledge that distinction, that in good faith, you should vote yes on this, which will certainly harm our business. I'd like to read you a quote from the commissioner of the FDA that he said in interviews during his media tour after this recent FDA action. He said, "We are initiating a process to prohibit and ultimately schedule 7OH as an illicit substance. We are not targeting the kratom leaf or ground kratom. Natural kratom is different than kratom derived from 7OH. Kratom leaf has been around for centuries. Some physicians say that there are minimal health concerns over kratom, but also health benefits. We're not talking about kratom. We're not targeting kratom. There is a new product that is a synthetic product popping up in vape stores all over the country called 7OH. It has many other names, but it is often marketed as kratom from what it is synthetically derived. If we are just saying every substance is your brain on drugs, then we are not properly risk stratifying these different products. It's important to distinguish the lexicon here. The kratom plant, which has been used in teas and similar drinks, has been around for centuries. The 7OH synthetic byproduct is stronger than oxycodone, and that is where we can distinguish what the real public health harm is," end quote, from the commissioner of the FDA explaining recent FDA actions and their take on kratom versus synthetically derived 7OH kratom, which we do not serve at our business and would never serve at our business. We want to serve the culturally traditional tea that has been served for centuries and is served in over 400 locations in the United States. You are not forced to stop us from doing this. You, you are not just following the law. And I want to make that very clear. Different counties have obviously come to different conclusions about this issue. We've provided data showing that over 400 Cava bars are serving these products in the United States and very few have prohibited it. And almost all of them that have prohibited it are based on specific legislation passed in that jurisdiction. It's very rare to look to what the FDA is saying about food additives and apply that to kratom tea and Cava tea. You are choosing this path. The department has said that it won't follow the World Health Organization and its position that these substances are safe, and the department won't follow the appellate court decisions that we've provided saying that what we're doing is legal, under the premise that those aren't binding authorities, so the department won't follow them. Yet in this recent proposal, the department has cited a trial court decision from New York City that we're very familiar with, which is the lowest court of the land, has no precedential value, and has said, yes, we agree with that case. And I find that, that very confusing. Our, our small business will fail from this proposal. We invested our life savings in this company and it's going to crash and burn because of this product being prohibited, which is 100% legal. Just take a moment and, and really think about that. Just think about whether it's the health department's place to say, this legal product that people want and enjoy that is being limited to adults specifically can't be sold based solely on an FDA blog post that says so and which was further explained by the FDA commissioner to not actually mean what you think it means. The FDA didn't make a regulation banning this. The legislature didn't make a law banning this. So you're not forced to prohibit this. You are choosing to destroy our company. And I understand that the health department's job is, is very difficult and you have this priority to protect the health and welfare of the citizens of Platte County. And I agree, that is very important. So I'll leave you with this. If it is your priority to protect the health of citizens, next time you're out at dinner, look around the restaurant and you will see everyone drinking a glass of wine or a cocktail or a beer, which is a poison that destroys the body, the mind, and relationships. It has been scientifically known for decades. This leads to domestic violence, vehicle fatalities, and just know that what we are trying to do is create a better path with a 100% legal product. And your decision, which is different than the decisions that have allowed these hundreds and hundreds of other companies to do this, you are incentivizing this more dangerous product and we really want to avoid that. I think that there are a lot of changing issues in the law about this. We've agreed to a plan that I, that I think protects you, protects us, and allows us to proceed, not in the ideal way, but we can proceed. But I urge you to vote no to this rash new proposal that you've come up with until you fully understand the FDA's position, particularly on 7OH versus naturally derived kratom. Thank you.
Are you done?
Yes. I'm trying to cognizant of the time.
Do you need more time? Besides telling us we're under informed and we're not acting in the citizens of Platte County's best interests, is there anything else you'd like to say?
I guess a question I'd like to ask that I, I hope you would answer during your discussion on this policy is whether this is going to be applied countywide. Because I, I did think it was a bit unfair that we had a specific policy applied last month in which we had to post signage that no one else had to post until their renewal because that was easier. And this new policy actually limits what we can sell. And if that's not applied countywide, I think that would be patently unfair that other businesses can still carry this product, but we cannot.
So we only.
Are you finished?
Yes.
Good. And you're an attorney?
Yes, that's right.
Do you have a financial interest in this business?
Yes, of course. Yeah, I've, I've.
And you're representing them?
Well, I wouldn't say I'm representing them.
Are you their representative attorney?
It depends how you're asking that. I don't represent them in a court of law, but I am the general counsel that handles business matters.
As an investor, I'm going to, I'm, I'm, we're going to conclude public comments on this very quickly because I think this is better handled and will be less embarrassing to you personally and to your business if we handle this in a different format. Because your comments are going to be recorded and archived. So what I will tell you is, I can look around this room and there's been more than 100 hours of human resources devoted to researching, looking at the legislation, looking at the safety parameters, looking at what the responsibilities under ordinance 230 of the food code for Platte County is and the FDA's recommendations. To insinuate this is an arbitrary and capricious and anecdotal comparison to alcohol restrictions, I take umbrage too. You insult me personally after I met with you. Okay. There has been exhaustive research. We will be happy to meet with you outside of the parameters of this meeting and lay out for you and your legal counsel, the rationale and the reasoning for doing this. The format in this meeting is no longer, in my opinion, conducive to effective communication about the safety of the citizens of Platte County. Thank you for your comments. Are there any other public comments? All right. Well, we'll move on to our old business, Cava and kratom policy discussion. Andrew?
Go ahead and scroll down. So on August 13th, as you all know, the board met an executive session to discuss what Jen changes policy 9.07, sale of Cava and kratom products and licensed food establishments. Based on that discussion, the board directed staff to prepare some things. And we have prepared that and those are attached in the board packet. One of the things is to amend policy 907 to not allow the sale of prepackaged kratom. That is in attachment one. The other thing was to change the required signage to actually just simplify it from the previous statement, just to take out kratom for one, but also just to say the Platte County Health Department does not inspect items containing Cava for health and safety. And specify, and I think one of the board members said, just make sure we specify that prepackaged Cava sold in the facility must be labeled and sold in accordance with all applicable laws. So we added that in. And then we updated policy 90. So in attachment two is that draft policy. We made a note not to adopt the codex. And then we also have, I'm trying to read here, the updated version of the regulation table. You know, when we had a discussion last month, there was some questions about who is using Cava and kratom as additives in different jurisdictions, whether it be St. Charles, whether it be Kansas City. You mentioned in your comments just a few minutes ago that staff had done quite a bit of research. Part of that research was actually contacting each of these jurisdictions.
So you were in contact with Jackson County and.
Well, Kansas City Health Department.
Kansas City Health Department.
St. Charles.
St. Charles Health Department. Tell us what you found.
So we had multiple discussions. So I think staff, I was on some of those calls, particularly with St. Charles. Taylor was on both the St. Charles and Kansas City. We sent staff out to the Kansas City store to actually buy a drink and just see what that process was. Kansas City Health Department was not aware of some of the practices that were going on. And they did not allow the Cava to be mixed into a mocktail that, and you see in the chart, it can't be used as an additive in food. So they are discussing that with that establishment. As the same case in St. Charles, they weren't, they just weren't aware of it. So it being allowed is, it was happening. That was accurate. It being allowed, not exactly, I mean, no.
It was not endorsed.
Not endorsed. Right. Thank you so much. So, but we had a lot of back and forth. Some of this is ongoing in, in development. And I kind of interrupted you earlier when I tried to answer Mr. Ryan's question, but I'm going to go ahead and answer it now. Jen had.
Ms. Snyder, our attorney.
Yes. Jen had advised us today as far as the letter going out, updating all the businesses. So we only regulate permitted establishments.
Correct. Food establishment.
Food establishments. So that is a very definite. There's a definition for what a food establishment is. So like that smoke shop or the gas station that only sells, you know, non.
We don't deal with retail.
We don't issue permits. We don't care about.
But we are only authorized to make sure food establishments are safe.
Right. But serve potentially hazardous food, right? But we permit licensed. So for all those, we are going to, if the board were to change the policy, we will be sending out a letter immediately, either tomorrow or the beginning of next week, and sending that to all permitted establishments.
Would you mind making sure that the information included in our packet gets forwarded to the representatives of Deviant Cava, including all of the documentation, including food ordinance 230 of Platte County?
So everything you have, they have.
They have.
We, it's all in the board packet.
They received this how long ago?
Well, they were, I, excuse me, this is Jen Snyder.
Go ahead, Jen.
I sent an email to Mr. Ryan on Tuesday and provided him with a link to the portion of the public website that shows the agenda and the board packet.
Great, great.
Which, you know, I think had been posted prior to Tuesday. I can't tell you what day.
It was publicly available on Monday.
Do either, any of the other board members wish to weigh, weigh in on this? Because I think the documents speak for themselves. We've had a meeting on this previously.
Yeah. Well, and I think it's, it's worth noting that our previous decision on the policy was informed by the facts that were available to us at the time. And as new things came up and we began speaking with other departments, obviously that was something that, you know, a bit of a fact-finding mission that we went on in an effort to be fair to a local small business and provide them with the best recommendations and policy that we could provide. And I think that we, and the department, the staff here have done their due diligence, well, beyond their due diligence, in fact, in looking into this matter. And I think that everybody has done exceptional work and I appreciate all your efforts.
It just seems like in the last couple of weeks, and maybe it's been the last month, there's been a lot of public information that's came up regarding kratom especially. And that was our concern. And at this point in time, I don't think the FDA is saying kratom is safe from my perception. And that, you know, we didn't really have a lot of information, or more negative information about the Cava. But the kratom seemed to be that we need to, in the, to keep everyone safe, is to hold off on that now and not allow it.
Dr. Kingsley, any comments?
I'm agreeing with everything you guys are saying. I think it would be in Devia Cava's, or Devia Cafe's purview to address the FDA personally and find out if there's any way that they can move forward with this so that they can actually get the FDA's blessing. If they could do that, maybe not them specifically, but the, the industry as a whole. I think it would behoove everyone to have that done. And if there's specific things, kind of what I was alluding to in the comment section, that, that maybe there is some discernible difference between one versus the other. I think getting the FDA to make an official policy on that would be very ideal. And it would make everybody's job in deciding on this information a whole lot easier.
Back to you.
Well, my only comments would be to summarize that ordinance 230 of the Black County Food Ordinance references, shall we will follow FDA guidance. The FDA guidance is clear. One of these items is an adulterant and one of the items is a food additive not generally recognized as safe. We can cuss and discuss all of the issues surrounding it. But the way I see this is, this health department is faced with the decision to either change our ordinance 230 and not follow the FDA's guidelines regarding food establishments and that we somehow are smarter and better than every other state that has made this illegal and every other county that now is currently re-reviewing their policy on this. I don't see how we can pass this without changing our food ordinance. I believe we would be disingenuous, inconsistent if we were to pass this. And quite frankly, I will go on record personally, not for the department, but personally stating that this would be inconsistent with our mission, is protecting the health and safety of the citizens of Platte County. Because we have to change our food ordinance, we have to make special exceptions. As a physician who has spent over 40 hours in the last three weeks reviewing this, looking at every publication, looking at the New York appellate court decision, looking at the FDA's guidance on this, at this point, I cannot support changing the Platte County food ordinance, disagreeing with the FDA and allowing the sale of these items in a food establishment, which is our purview at this point in time. Do we have anything? Can I see the agenda so we can move on?
I think we have to make a board motion.
Well, I'm just, I'd like to make. It was up for a discussion. I want to make sure. I'm moving to amend the Cava and kratom policy by accepting the changes prepared by staff and the draft policy.
There a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Any, anybody opposed to going on to the vote? Hearing none.
I think everything that's been, Mike, I'd say everything that's been said has been said. Like I said, I, I, I do feel bad for the, for Devia Cafe, I do, because I want you guys to be successful. But this has to go above our pay grade. You're going to have to go to the FDA and have them make a decision that benefits you in the long run. And like I said, I don't know if it's just you specifically or the, the industry as a whole needs to get official response that, that will be helpful for you. And I don't know how easy that is. I don't know what studies will need to be done, but it needs to be done because I want you guys to be successful. But at this point, we, it would be in, in the wrong interest of, of the Platte County citizens to, to continue to do what we set out with the first approval, the first motion that we did. So, all right, I'm done with my discussion.
And I will leave my comments too. I went and met with the, the representatives at their place of business. I bought a cup of coffee. I personally don't have an issue with Cava and kratom. Personally, I don't. Everybody gets to make choices about what they put into their bodies, if it's legal, and they get to make choices. But at this point in time, I think we've, several hundreds of hours of staff time. I think the issue is we, where we're at. So, and I'm more than happy to have meetings outside of today with Deviant Cava to look at ways that, I personally, as a citizen of Black County, will. I personally, as a citizen of Black County, will bust my butt to help them be successful. But as a member of this board who's sworn to protect the health and safety and follow the laws, I think we're a little handcuffed. So I think at this point, uh, we go into a roll call vote, uh, Dr. Kingsley.
Uh, I vote yes to amend the 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 this uh motion.
Susan.
Uh, Susan Cole, yes.
That.
Is that Gronki, yes.
Michael Chaffee, yes. Next to Jen Dyer.
So, Dr. Chaffee.
Strategic plan.
Yeah.
Yay.
So as we kind of transition, if you want to come up and take the podium. I am going to, if it's okay with all of you, let Jen leave unless you have any questions.
I don't know, I like having her here, but you know, whatever you want.
So I will say that we pay for attorney services by the hour.
Yeah.
In light of that.
Well, then she shouldn't have been here.
Thank you.
Didn't work.
Thank you all.
Hey Jen, thank you for everything you did on this.
For support, thank you, have a good rest of your meeting, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, that's okay, thank you.
So do you want to inter- or Rebecca, do you want to make an introduction?
Yes, um, so this is Taylor Anderson, she's in working.
You don't have to speak loud.
Oh, can you hear me online? Okay.
Yeah.
Um, this is interesting, she's here from the uh Missouri Health and Health Institute, or soon to be known as the Institute. Um, she's going to, she's worked with us the last four months to help us kind of put together a strategic plan. And something I was bragging about to other health departments recently is that we actually uh got every staff member to be a part of the strategic plan planning process. Um, so we appreciate her facilitating and she's gonna walk us through what we've come up with. Great, thank you for the introduction, so yeah, as she said, I'm Taylor, nice to meet you all and thank you so much for having me. So here on the first slide, I kind of wanted to very briefly just get to know you a little bit, um, just really glad to be here and congrats support in this. Um, just also wanted to give a good opportunity to introduce myself as well. So I have been at the Institute, Missouri Public Health Institute specifically since May of twenty twenty-three. Um, my background is actually not in public health, so I was a pediatric clinic manager for primary care and also specialty care. And magically came into the role here at Mosivia or the Institute, and I've been here ever since then. So very passionate about kind of integrating the public health system into the community and then just community improvement in general. So my primary, primary roles are the community health assessments, um, the community health improvement plans, which the health department is currently doing as well. Um, and then my primary role then with Platte County Health Department has been facilitating their strategic plan. Um, also at the Institute, so some other things I do there is their public health nursing collaborative, we partnered with some other state entities on that. And then I also facilitate the strategic planning cohort as well, so definitely very passionate about the process. So, as you can see there, of course, how to include a sweet old picture of my family too. Um, I am from a town very close to Springfield, Missouri, so it's about two and a half hours here, so. I've enjoyed the time of coming here though, and we did, I think it was like an eight hour staff retreat, as Rebecca said, so. Definitely spent a lot of time together, we've been meeting every two weeks at least and have definitely been very diligent in this work, so. So kind of very briefly, as you guys have the draft of the strategic plan, um, I believe that was sent out this week. This is a very broad overview, so happy to answer any questions that you have. But very briefly, I wanted to go over the process of how we got to this draft. Go over as you guys were also included in the process of the mission, vision, value review and revision. Go over some of the data pieces that were in this, the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and challenges piece that again, you guys also participated in at the board. And then through all of that work, we were able to identify the priorities that the, all of the health department staff voted on. So again, it was a very collaborative process. Any questions about the agenda before we move on? Okay. So wanted to give you a bit of a background of kind of where this process started and the framework that we follow. So this comes from a national framework, it is evidence based, um, they come from NACHO, which I don't know if you guys have noticed that public health has acronyms. So we follow NACHO's guidelines, which is the National Association of County and City Health Officials. So it also goes through FAB, which is the accreditation accreditation board for public health. So we make sure that we follow all of their standards and measures to ensure that we're meeting all of those for accreditation. So as you can see there, we do follow the seven step framework. Obviously there, as you can see, the first step is just even exploring the strategic planning process. And then kind of laying the groundwork for that, so identifying stakeholders. One of the requirements of FAB is to include the health department's board or their governing body. So that was kind of the first process of that, and then also determining the timeline, which I believe that we started this process in February of this past year. Um, and then we did host the staff retreat as well, April fifteenth, so. And now here we are in August, like I said, it's been about a six month process that we've diligently been working on this. And then the third module there is developing the mission, vision, values. So again, for the FAB requirements, you do not have to revise them, but it is at least a requirement to review the mission, vision, values, just to ensure that it's still. Holding up what the health department is doing and again, just what their values are. And then, of course, you do have to have the environmental scan, so that looks at several different things, including existing data and then any gaps of data that there may be. And then, of course, collecting that and then summarizing it as well. And we'll get into that here in a couple of slides also. And then, once those results are analyzed, so we did this at the staff retreats after we did the SWAC analysis and the mission, vision, value review and after we had your feedback. We actually allowed the staff to go ahead and vote while we were at that staff retreat in April of what they wanted their priorities to be. So they were very involved in the process and we decided right then and there on April fifteenth that that was going to be the health department's priority. So I feel like staff felt really empowered by that and a part of the process, and so that was really neat to see everybody come together uh and decide on them. So then just the last couple of modules there is just actually drafting the strategic plan and then continuously reviewing it as well. So it at least has to be reviewed annually and that will be with the board also. Okay, so these are, like I said, it did not have to be revised, it did at least have to be reviewed, but these are the revised mission and vision. So uh, again, I know that you guys were very briefly a part of that process, we did ask for your feedback on if you felt like the previous mission, vision and values were current. And if not, then what would you like to change? So we did the same thing with staff as well. So for the mission piece, it explains why the health department exists and who they serve. Um, just kind of a recap of some of the questions that we had asked about that. So in the packet that you all saw and then also staff whenever we presented to them, we had asked, um, what does the current mission say about who we are? What our purpose is, what business are we in and how are we unique? We did really try to kind of focus on the unique piece to again, just to kind of separate from other um departments as well. And then also focusing on what is the health department's role in fulfilling the needs of the community. So in all of that, which we did um create a summary sheet that had everybody's responses and we summarized the board and then also the staff's responses to that. So we do have that readily available as well for you. Uh, but that is how we ended up with the current mission now that is being proposed, which is to promote health and prevent disease in our community. So as we proceed through some of the priorities, one of the most important things was health literacy for the Platte County Health Department. That was something that was very meaningful to them, and so we tried to come up with simplified mission and vision. That they can recite on the spot, that the community can remember, um, and just really sticks with those that read that. So, and then same for vision, so we did the same thing, health and wellness for all. So very health literate and again, meaningful, um, as I said, we've spent at least every two weeks for the last six months, um, reviewing these different segments. So a couple of the things that were asked for the vision statement to further refine were what does our organization and community look like? And then what do we want the future of the health department to be? So in asking those, that is how the vision was created for that. And then values, again, obviously some questions were prompted to that as well, just to kind of get staff thinking and then you all as the board also. So essentially just discussion around that, more focused on what are the beliefs that guide the health department's staff in serving the community? So what are those behaviors? And then that is how the health department staff here had landed on those, is it six, I was trying to count, sorry, so the six. So customer service, accountability, collaboration, like I said, health literacy, of course, focusing on evidence based practices and then transparency. So those were the six that the health department staff and also the team that is sitting behind me just felt was very relevant for the work that they do to serve the community.
And those are, sorry to interrupt.
No, please do.
But they're somewhat in order also, because we actually had them. Now, we did kind of come up with an acronym for them, which was kind of cute, but we were like, what is the number one thing? So we kind of all put them in order and customer service was really our number one thing that we wanted to, like. It was, everyone's either number one or number two priority, it wasn't everyone's number one, I don't know who it wasn't, but. But it was number one or number two for everybody, and so we just felt like that, that order was pretty important, thank you.
I like that, yeah, thank you.
Hey, hey, can I interrupt you, Dr. Kingsley? So um, Andrew and I did our one-on-one and we were discussing this, um, I know we're gonna talk about this a little bit later, but we have customer satisfaction scores that have come back. Uh, we did a survey, uh, I think it was twenty-one surveys. And our uh, our responses back, five being the best, we've had a whole lot of fives and I, I think four fours. Um, and I think it all goes back to customer service being our number one priority and then accountability. Having the pictures uh of of all the directors and and uh and managers and and stuff, you know. Below there, the that, everybody that's on that wall, when you walk in the in the lobby reflects that there's accountability for everyone that's involved. And the collaboration is there as well, I I, I think the customer service being number one is excellent, so keep doing what you're doing, guys.
So I even like transparency, you know, one of the things that happened kind of just organically. At our executive session was we had some discussions and we're like, you know, having that board packet up every month. And on the website just for full transparency, so every other places I've worked, we've always done that, we just haven't done that here. And putting that up there, just another thing we can do, pretty simple, but full transparency, you know. There's no, there's no hidden agenda, there's nothing that we're doing behind the scenes as a gotcha, just here it is. And I think that accountable, and we put something up there that is. Really inaccurate or really popular or whatever, we have to own that. So I think, you know, that's accountability, that's transparency, it's a lot of those things. And as we put together those packets, we try to be health literate, so even I, Taylor would say either fourth grader or Andrew can understand.
Right.
Yeah.
I think. I was gonna say, uh, going back to the, sorry, keep it on, I'm sorry, but I just wanna say, um, the, I think, uh, you gotta remember, we're actually a government entity, we're not like a private company. Um, you, I mean, I, you could always think of government entity to be like the DMV or something, and the fact that we're getting. Scores of fours and fives is is amazing, and so if if we continue down the path where customer service is our number one goal, I think we're gonna do very well.
Yeah, and just another thing to point out is we tried to make the whole strategic plan very health literate, because that is a big value, it's something that's very important to us. Help literacy is essentially just making health information that's presented in an easy to understand way, whether it's verbally or written um or visually. Um, so that's something that we try to incorporate, so. It's, it might seem like it's dumbed down, but we just wanted to make sure Andrew could understand, like he said, no. Uh, but we, you know, this is a document that we will share publicly and other people might read, and so we want it to be easy to understand and using. More simple language and making it so that it's something that.
Yeah.
Is accessible to all, and and that's kind of like.
Be interested in it, more people will read it.
Yeah, so, so we're gonna be trying to do that with all of our our materials, making sure that they're they're easy to understand.
Great.
And again, it's, yeah, and I, as I said too, you know, that was one of the questions that was asked is what does make you guys unique? And so I think, yeah, just being very mindful of that, as Dr. Kingsley had said about your crisis sports, I think that's very unique, so. I think. Maybe, is it working? It's not.
Oh, yeah, how about now?
Oh, sorry, you went over. Okay, so another piece of that, as you saw in one of the modules, is the environmental scan. So that is considering just looking at different data across those five different sections there. So an environmental scan definition wise is a review of the department's internal and external factors. And so through the process, looking at community health trends, resources, strengths, challenges, and then any other external factors as well. So upon looking at those, then it is all divided into those five categories, as you can see. So I did leave it very brief on the slide, I can go ahead and elaborate, but also in your packet, it is more um defined as well. But for the workforce development piece of that, something that really stood out was different trainings, leadership structure, professional development, then annual employee satisfaction. So again, these were just things that were gathered and looking at the different themes. So next, financial sustainability, so from the twenty twenty-four financial report, the primary source of revenue was local taxes, contracts and grants. And then the largest portion of funding was allocated to administration, the public health clinic and then primary care. So for the third category, communication, sharing information with the community, promoting services, gathering feedback, social media, board meetings, community events, coalition meetings. Website, course evaluation form, and then the customer satisfaction survey, so a lot being done around the communication piece for that. And then also in terms of IT, so the Platte County Health Department is contracted with Riverside Technologies, which is used to enhance efficiency and provide resolution of technical issues as well. And then second to that, employees must do annual cybersecurity training as well. So and then lastly, so what we looked at for community is the Northland Coalition, um, Keep No Kids Safe, Northland Professionals in Aging, Senior Falls Prevention, and then the Northland Health Alliance as well. So then we also conducted, as you guys are also a part of, the SWAC, or you may have heard it as a SWAC analysis also. Um, again, something else that this team did was decide if we wanted to use threats or challenges, so again, just being very mindful of wording for that. And we landed on challenges for the specific draft. So kind of part of the process, I just wanted to walk you through so you could realize how engaged the staff was in the process. Um, it can be really intimidating when you have like forty people in a room and there might be some introverts that don't feel comfortable speaking in front of everybody. So again, we tried to be very mindful of that and actually placed large sticky notes around the room. And just allowed people to sit there, I don't know, probably thirty minutes or so and write out what they thought strengths were, weaknesses, opportunities and then challenges. So gave them a stack of sticky notes and a pen and just let people write it that way. There was not a whole lot of words said during this part, but there was a lot written, so. It was, yeah, definitely a very important time, and I think we even like extended the time, we're like, people just kept writing. So a lot came out of this, which I thought was really great. Um, again, I did leave it brief on there, we do um elaborate further in the packet. But some of the strengths that arose from that was collaboration, leadership, benefits, innovation and expansion. And then weaknesses were funding, um, just funding sources in general. Um, the organizational chart, staff retention and digital engagement, so strengths and weaknesses are both internal. And then the opportunities and challenge are gonna be the external pieces. So in terms of external for opportunities was just rapport of the health department in general, cross training and then outreach efforts. And then some challenges that might be faced for the health department is cost of living, misinformation, policy changes and politics. So as I said, after we did the mission, vision, values piece and then the SWAC analysis at that staff retreat, um, in April, staff then voted on the three priorities. So the three that they decided to vote on were workforce development, leadership and governance advancement, and then improved communications. So and then once those were identified that day, so ever since April until now, um, we've just really been working on refining what we want the goals to be of those. And then obviously coming up with key performance indicators, just to kind of measure the success on those. And then also the activities of how the health department is going to be successful in that. Okay, so over the next few slides, we'll go over the priorities and then what the goal is. So for example, on this one, you can see the priority being workforce development and then the goal there is in the green. So for the goal of workforce development, staff uh plans to develop and maintain a skilled and motivated public health workforce. So for the goal of workforce development, staff, uh, plans to develop and maintain a skilled and motivated public health workforce. And then there in the next slide, so we'll have what the objective is. So for this one, priority one, objective one, and then what the KPI is to measure success. And then the strategies or activities below. So to measure the success for this one specifically, so you do, of course, we use the SMART objectives for that, just to make sure that they were measurable. Um, but by December of two thousand and twenty-six, ensure at least eighty percent of staff have completed assigned professional development and educational programs. So a number of trainings uploaded into the program of pay loss city is how that is going to be tracked. So some other ways to achieve that are going to be doing the core competencies, which is also, um, a national standard. So looking at the ten core competencies of that, um, doing some training curriculum, some different staff workshops. That can be during like staff lunch and learns or different things of that sort. And then just also ensuring that staff is able to attend conferences or other op, learning opportunities as well. And then the second objective for, uh, this priority is by December of two thousand and twenty-nine, implement and refine a process for assessing professional goal development. And that's going to be, uh, measured by the number of completed annual performance reviews, either by the managers or supervisors. So some ways that they are going to achieve that is going to be through interviews, whether that's a stay interview or also an exit interview as, um, staff moves on to other roles as well. Um, and then also just doing annual staff surveys and then during those annual performance reviews as well. Any questions about the first priority before we move on to the second? So the second priority that was voted on by staff was leadership and governance advancement. And the overarching goal for that is enhance organizational consistency by developing clear policies and paths for advancement. So for the first priority for this one, just by December of two thousand and twenty-eight, standardize a hundred percent of policies to ensure that they are health literate. So again, with that being one of the driving values of the health department, again, we're just really following that through this whole, um, strategic plan. Yes, go ahead.
Elaborate a little bit on how, what your all's definition of health literate.
Yeah.
For those of us who aren't.
So, yeah. You guys want to answer next? I know that's something I've really done it to.
So really it's kind of having all the wording be on a third or fourth grade level, but also concise, get to the point, what are you trying to say? And so even if you have a PhD, you don't want to spend three hours figuring out what to do.
So in my opinion, something that you've had in front of you recently, that I thought the author did a really good job of being health literate was Bailey's most recent memos to you. They were, it's a pretty complex topic, right? And there's a lot of things that you have to take, like, it's a big topic. And she had to take a lot of different things into consideration. And as far as I'm concerned, she took that pretty massive topic and put it into pretty concise sentences that were, you still have white on that paper. And there was a lot of information where someone else might have taken that and had lots of words. And it's even the FDA stuff that you read, like when you go read the, like that kind of in my opinion, strays a little bit away from health literacy. Because when you get, by the time you get to the fourth paragraph, it is just like, didn't I read this already? Because they kind of say the same thing like five times. And so I'm going to say like how she did it is what we're kind of going for in our policies. Get straight to the point. I am looking for how many, how many hours of sick leave do I have to maintain before Cindy says, I'm abusing my sick leave? I don't want to read forty-seven pages to see that if I use every hour as soon as I accrue it, that I'm abusing it. I want to see, you know, if you have worked here over two years and you don't have at least fifty hours in your pool, we're going to require a doctor's note. That's what I want to read. You know, and that's not actually the policy, but it's that simple is what I, does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
And so a lot of it too is also just taking like long wordy paragraphs and turning it more into like bullet points or lists. Um, so I don't have an example of the policy with me, but it's, you know, more like this where it's like, you know, we have number one and then A, B, you know, like indentations where it's just like, you really quickly want to go to a section. Oh, you see public health intern. Okay, I can easily see it. Sometimes it's like bolding or highlighting things, drawing your attention to those areas. And then also like putting things in more like bulleted lists, making it just more bite-sized chunks. Um, so we're trying to do that for the public.
The policies.
Question about that.
Simple, easy to understand, consistent and concise.
Right. Because how many policies have you read that you're like, you, you just read twenty pages and you're like, wait, what, what does that mean? Like?
Dr. Kingsley, you were.
Yeah. So did I hear right though, that this has been, you make it to third grade level reading? Is that what you guys said?
Yeah.
Four.
Fourth grade.
Fourth grade. But these are employee, but this, these policies are for the employees of the health department, correct?
Yes.
So our, yeah, our policies.
Why do we need to make it fourth grade level?
Because I'm an employee.
So, and the policies probably aren't going to be quite fourth grade reading level, but another thing is, is if you're using bigger words or large, you know, like we have policies on surveillance and wastewater and the different things of like complex ideas. So it's defining those things. So maybe isn't, you're not always going to dumb everything down, but if you, if it's like a bigger word, um, like I think I learned the word ware washing um, was defined in one of the policies and I, I didn't know that word.
So you're right, Dr. Kingsley. Depending on the discipline, sometimes it's not going to be at a fourth grade level. I think we're saying. For, you know, for Dustin's clinic stuff, it's not going to be fourth grade level. For Bailey's environmental health policies, some of that's not going to be. But for, you know, office stuff and typical things, we have a very, and, you know, we have for a long time had a very comprehensive set of policies. Cindy, just this week, pointed I was trying to do something that was against policy and she called me out on it. And like, you can't do that.
Still works.
We're rewriting the policy.
That's a joke for the record.
But she even chanted it. She's like, you can't do that.
Love it. I'll, I'll get on Amazon.
But I think the thing was, is like, because it was something that, you know, we're trying to make sure that it's maybe a little simpler and more readily available. And not to say, you know, maybe I should have known that. I didn't. She knows where it is. But we're just trying to simplify all of this stuff and shorten it basically.
All right.
Just for conciseness. Yeah. And so that is actually part of the strategies and activities. So it's creating a checklist. So whenever the policies are being reviewed, of going off the checklist and making sure that you aren't using plain language. Not necessarily that it does have to be at a third or fourth grade reading level, but just using more plain language and being concise as well. And then the second objective for the second priority is by December of two thousand and twenty-eight, develop leadership training plans for a hundred percent of supervisory staff. So that again is going to be tracked by percentage of supervisory staff who attended at least one external training per year. And then just some ways to achieve that, of course, is pursuing professional development, um, having different leadership discussions. So those will be internal leadership discussions that also include you all. Um, and again, just conferences and then training logs with that as well. And there are, as I said, more elaborated in the document as well. Go ahead, Andrew.
Yeah. And this is just super important to me. I mean, continual succession planning and continual development of our team. You know, someday I'm going to leave. And succession planning is absolutely not just about the director. It's about all of our management and leadership team. And all of these positions are key to our success. And I want to always be developing that next generation of leaders as we move through. And I want to make sure we're talking about what are your goals and objectives? Giving people opportunities to grow, giving them, and some of my director reports think I'm too good at this. But giving them opportunities to be challenged, giving them opportunities to test their resolve. Giving them opportunities to really push their limits. They're like, oh, you pushed something. But, you know, it is.
So outside, we, we're encouraging our staff, uh, in, in, as part of the strategic plan, not only are we encouraging our staff to get, become developed at whatever station in their career they are. Um, is it part of their job descriptions perhaps to have ongoing continual training? Or is there anything already codified on, on that subject?
There is. But we are also part of the other thing, and, um, Taylor may be getting to it, is we are developing a curriculum for everybody. So there's a curriculum. And you may remember when we talked about pay loss city. It actually makes it, and I did the first one because I like to steal stuff from Cindy and her team. But I made the first pay loss city required training, and it was a health literacy training. And we did a staff meeting, Taylor and our intern, Krupa Shaw, who she presented on the customer service survey here, but she presented a very nice health literacy training. We recorded it and I pushed it out on pay loss city. I apparently forgot the part, but hey, if you're online, we should check you off. And so mainly we got, I got yelled at for, I was online and you didn't check me off. But it was a learning experience to remember to do that. But we pushed it out through pay loss city. I was able to mark every, we have a sign-in sheet, so I marked everyone who was here in person. But it worked out pretty good, right? Besides that. And I uploaded the video. I had no issue. We're going to be able to have a lot of power for, you know, there's some things that we need to do every year, whether it be sexual harassment training, whether it be, you know, and there's some things we want to do for every new hire, basic Word, basic Microsoft Excel, basic and intermediate Word and Excel, PowerPoint. We don't have a lot of those, like we don't have a computer teacher, but it's included in pay loss city. All we have to do is assign it and put it in that curriculum. And then we can create videos on how to use a coffee machine or whatever it is, or coffee machine, which might be a little more relevant, but we can do these things, push them out. And really impact the whole group all at once. Taylor, please continue.
Yeah, absolutely. And then this does kind of extend into the workforce development plan that's also being worked on as well. So kind of a little bit of overlap between the two plans, but then internally they're working on the workforce development. So that'll expand a little bit on this objective too. Okay. So third and final priority that was voted on is improve communication. So goal of that is process strength in communications to share timely, accurate, and again, health literate information. So first one of this, again, it's going to be kind of going off of a checklist as well, just to ensure that everything is being reviewed. Again, not necessarily that it has to be revised, but just reviewing it to make sure that it is health literate and then also accessible as well. And then that will be tracked by the number of website views on the website once it is updated. So as you can see, some of the activities that are there is changing the website layout, um, increasing and enhancing the social media presence, following ADA standards, and then also posting the community health improvement plan priorities. So those will also be listed on the website and then just make sure that they're readily available and accessible too. And then the second objective and the final one is by December of two thousand and twenty-seven, ensure that eighty percent of staff are trained in and utilizing health literacy best practices. So that will be again through percentage of staff who have completed the annual health literacy and plain language training through pay loss city. So.
And just a little bit about the website, you know, we are continuing to work on it. But one of the things that's really important to me is that the website be really useful, be able to, you know, I think our trend toward technology is obviously there. And people want to be able to do as much as they can online, and we are not quite there, but we are going to be moving towards that. So if they have an appointment here and they want to know what it's like, and they want to know, you know, do I have to have a parent there to get my STI test? Or how much is it going to cost? Or even what that experience is going to be like. Some people are very scared that first time or what's private, what's not. They don't want to read thirteen pages. They kind of want someone to hold their hand and talk them through it. Videos and little helpful things. We're going to make it an experience that is much more pleasant. And I know Dustin has a lot of ideas on how to help people through that.
Great.
Yeah. Thanks for sharing that. So again, um, I think as Taylor has mentioned, is this is not going to be something that kind of sits on a shelf. So it is going to be shared in the community, shared with staff, um, annually reviewed at least, and also quarterly. Um, so the whole purpose over the next several years is just to continuously, uh, monitor and then improve as well. So this is not set in stone. There is an amendment page. So as you guys do quarterly or annual reviews, you are able to of course track it and then decide if you do need to make any adjustments. So one of the important things to know on this side specifically is the linkage between the different plans. So, um, the chart and the chip have been completed. Obviously now we are working on the strategic plan. And then as you can see, kind of below that, there are some other plans that are also required by staff or the public health accreditation board. So just ensuring that there's linkage between those is one of the national requirements as well. So be, just being very diligent, making sure that we're reviewing and making sure that those linkages are there.
And that diagram.
I was getting ready to say shout out Rebecca to that one.
That's like copyright by Rebecca.
Public information.
Yes. I had a, um, different looking one that I made really quickly to describe. For this, I need to show people how the plans feed into each other and then why we had the performance management system to make sure that our, you know, everything that we're doing is effective, efficient, and good for the community. And I was trying to show how that went back up. Anyways, I had a not as pretty one and now it is much better.
There was a lot in that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it's very easily, you can look at it and see what the linkages are there. So lastly is just evaluation. As I said, there are going to be frequent evaluation periods of this. So I believe Taylor and if not anybody else on her team has created an Excel sheet. So there's going to be tabs at the bottom within Excel to reflect different deadlines, the staff or team that is. Additional questions? I would say it has been very thorough. So I think there's been at least five additional meetings once we thought we had the final draft. And yeah, this is continuously revising it to ensure the health literacy piece of that and just being thorough. So they worked extremely hard.
It looks great. It was like a lot of hard work.
Yes. Yeah. They have put in a lot of hours and a lot of conversation. So it is, yeah. It's great to see it, at least in a packet, even though it does still have draft on it, but it is finally coming to fruition, which is exciting to see it all come together.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, definitely. Thank you. And thank you guys for having me. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Taylor.
Yeah, thank you.
Move to approve and implement the Plate County Health Department, two thousand and twenty-five through thirty strategic plan.
I can second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll go roll call vote. Dr. Kingsley?
Yes.
Susan Coeble, yes.
Michael Shapay, yes.
Zach Rondt, yes.
Motion passes. Maybe it's not the most opportune time, but. Maybe it's not the most opportune time, but Dr. Kingsley let me run the meeting, so I'm going to interject something here. Uh, I, I feel bad that I did not go ahead and recognize the exhaustive efforts of the entire Flat County Health Department, its staff. Uh, I'm going to single out Bailey and I told her personally, but the staff wrestling with the food safety issues and compliance with our ordinances and the FDA. I am proud to sit on a board that has such dedicated, talented, well-intended individuals who did a huge amount of work that I don't want to be glossed over in any way, shape or form, that there was a lot of work done. The work product was exceptional to me and I rarely use that work. Um, so, uh, as running the meeting, I want to go ahead and make that part of the record. Uh, I, I gave Bailey my kudos in person, but Andrew, you do a stellar job with your staff, encouraging them and getting the best work product out of them. And I, I don't want this meeting to go on any further without at least my chance to guffaw. So I've done that. All right, reports.
Well, thank you very much.
I just got a conscience to keep clean.
I feel the same. Sometimes they don't get to hear that from me. Sometimes like you just get to hear, now on to the next thing that I need to turn it, but I absolutely feel the same.
Before you, can you go back to the previous slide, the administrative services slide?
Yep, go ahead.
I see that the numbers, the numbers went up big time in July. Is it just because of summer and everybody's getting ready for school or what was the issue there?
I will let Cindy.
That's a lot of it. Busy time here, we're very between athletics and going back to school, everybody needs their kids, so that's, that's been a big part.
Okay, I was just curious, I just thought it's either school or people are really starting to find the building and they know where to go now. So that's, that's great.
So part of what is what Cindy said, now scroll down so we can see the history part. But if you also look at just the visits we've had since 2020, now I don't know what the visits were like previous to 2020, but we are far and above what we've ever done. I mean, we're a couple hundred above any other year for the number of people. So I do think we're pretty convenient and people like coming here and people are starting to tell their friends, I may have mentioned this last month too, but we are getting a crowd. Um, every once in a while, there are all these cute little babies up there getting their first certificate. So, you know, Dan is funny because he loves babies. And so we'd have to stop him from being too creepy, but you know, it's fun seeing all the babies and little kids up there.
We get a good share of, good share of our phone call volume, people wanting to know where we're at for birth, for birth certificates, like people are, so. And they find it easy as soon as they realize they go, oh yeah, I know where that's at, or the area, so.
Looking at some of the survey results, one of the questions like how do people hear about us? It's usually from a friend or family member, so word of mouth is one of our best pieces we can hear.
I won't talk about it too much, but we are still working on the HVAC stuff. The good thing or bad thing is it's really hot. And this, and when Dr. Kingsley and I spoke on Friday, Frank and I, uh, now Frank's been doing a lot of the hot work and he's to be commended because some of the air intrusions and different things, you can only spot when you're up on the roof and looking at that RTU when it's hot and you can feel the cool air coming out or it's hot inside up in the attic space. And you can, so we're identifying some issues. I am in the process of trying to make all those findings health literate. So we can be pointed with pictures and show all that. Um, but we're getting there. Go ahead and scroll down. Uh, Dr. Chape and myself and Larry Jones with Mo Cepi, um, Missouri Center for Public Health Excellence will be attending the National Association of Local Boards of Health in October in Savannah, Georgia. Hopefully we'll have some good discussion about starting a, some sort of local board of health organization here in Missouri. Um, Dr. Chape, I know you, uh, have met Tiffany Bear a few times. Um, seem to have a good rapport with her, I spoke with her today. I encourage her to try to go and she is looking at going.
Great.
So she is trying to get some department. So, uh, what is Tim, the deputy director, I can't remember his last name. The deputy director of Health and Senior Services. But they are looking at putting some money towards this initiative to get us started through the Public Health Infrastructure Grant. So Tiffany is looking at going. So I think we may actually have some better discussions or more kind of, uh, discussions that will act as catalysts.
Um, what can I? Real quick, I would say that when I, when Mike and I went there, whatever it was two years ago now, um, they, they, they do need some leadership at the national level and I was trying to get Dr. Chape to, to join the executive board and he wouldn't do it, but maybe this time while you guys are there, you could convince him.
Whoever's in charge of telling.
They, uh, I think it would be very helpful to, to have stronger leadership. That was just my experience from it, maybe, maybe things have changed in the two years since we've been there or the year or whatever it's been. Has it been a year or two? I can't remember, when's the last time we went?
It was last year. It was last year.
Last year, yeah. Yeah, so maybe things have changed, but that would, that was the only criticism or kind of real, well, there was one other criticism, but that, I, they just need stronger leadership and I think if Missouri has its own chapter, we could go there and, uh, I think kind of push things forward the way it needs to be done, so.
May I be blunt? I will be blunt, I'm not going to ask permission. I agree with you, they need help, they need leadership, they need guidance. And yes, there are lots of individuals with the capacity and capabilities to assist them. But as an organization that is being managed by an outside entity because of their fiscal mismanagement, their lack of guidelines and their willingness to engage political hacks to promote political agendas at the national meeting, I was reluctant to engage my energies in that because the return on investment to me personally isn't there. So moving forward, I think looking at what they may or may not be able to do to assist in a Missouri Association of Local Boards of Health, uh, is moot. Because I think we got to take care of our own business here and I don't believe a national, that that organization is currently at a talent level, an organizational level to provide any assistance to us. And that any assistance they would have been able to provide to us essentially would have come from us to them and back to ourselves. Uh, Andrew's been very encouraging of me indirectly, very quietly hoping I'm going to grab this, uh, horse by the reins and go ride it into victory. But we have to define what victory is, we have to see about the funding, we have to get buy-in from all entities from a state level to encourage some reluctant boards of health to engage. And if there's funding and political support for things and it is couched correctly, organized appropriately, uh, that's when having good leaders who are enthusiastic and pure in their motivation, I think will be successful. So there's a reason I didn't take your, um, encouragement at the time.
Things could be different, you never know. I, I don't think so, I don't think it's going to be that much different, but I could be wrong.
Well, we've got some opportunities to lead in this state as a very well-funded organization with lots of talent and figuring a way to get this other state, uh, boards of health who may not, who clearly don't have as much resources as we have, who may not have engagement and buy-in from talent locally. That, if this is, this is a big long-term item that needs to be built on the appropriate foundation with the right guidance and I look forward to continuing the dialogue.
What were the two states that were really engaged? It was Utah and what was the other one?
Well, I can tell you Utah because I've done a deep dive on how they achieved what they did in a unique fashion there, but they only have seven, uh, essentially seven chapters or boards of health that they were able to get state engagement on. And they needed that to do that. Now Missouri is, is a, is a different entity and if we can get our state folks involved like we have and they're going to engage with this, um, I'm willing to, uh, do my part to, uh, try to assist.
Well, I think we'll have some interesting conversations with the Missouri Centers for Public Health Excellence, DHSS if they're able to come. I think someone from Wester County Health Unit may be there and whoever else is from Missouri. So I think if nothing else, it'll be a nice place to be able to discuss some of us and meet some others who might have some good ideas on how to get this started, which is the hope and reason why we're going. Um, but before I move on to the rest of the report, I do want to thank Taylor again and you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting.
No, now, if you leave, we're fine with it, then we can talk about you. Just kidding. Thank you very, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
So the next thing that Dr. Kingsley is probably was chopping up a bit and kind of likes to steal my thunder always. So I'm going to quit telling them the good stuff during our one-on-one. But as I've mentioned, and if you see the signs or you'll see it when you leave, we did launch our customer service survey. Um, but I believe Krupa had talked about at the last board meeting, we launched it on August 1st. I don't know how many.
We actually have 29 responses now, so I just checked.
Wow.
But as of when I wrote this on Monday, we had 21. So we've gotten another eight. Um, but as of August 18th, we've had 21 responses. Um, and in the future, I'll have a nice little summary of, and I'll put the comments so everyone can see what they.
And is that outside the surveys that are being, uh, uh, customer feedback from our Swoop clinic partners?
Yes, this is just ours.
This is just, thank you, just make sure.
Yeah, this is just, yeah, this is just the people clicking on that QR code.
The, there's some Swoop stuff that we're going to be talking about a little bit later that is not as glowing as what we got, so just saying.
Right. Uh, and so out of 21 surveys, 17 people had rated the service five stars and four had rated the service four stars. And Taylor told me that adds up to 21, so there were nothing below four, right? I thought you told me how to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I think most of them, we're mostly getting fives.
And the comments, there's some good comments. One of the interesting things about accreditation is we are supposed to do the survey and we're also supposed to enact change because of the feedback. I think Taylor initial, Taylor's initial concern was we weren't going to get any feedback that we could act on. But there is going to be, there's even some stuff here, not big changes, but some things we can, little things we can already do. It won't be what we probably submit the FAB, but it will be things that we could if we wanted to. But I had mentioned probably during Krupa's presentation, Clay County on average gets like two responses a month. Our inaugural month, we already have 29 or three weeks.
And then you and I talked, you and I talked about response bias because we're using the QuickTrip gift card, the $25 gift card. Could we be getting glowingly positive responses because of that as, as the reward? But you said you specifically tell them that whether they do the survey or don't do the survey, whatever the responses has no bearing in whether they could win the gift card, correct?
Right, and it's totally separate database. So you're signing up for the drawing is totally separate from whatever your answers are.
Right.
She, um, budget, money's important, so we're at 58.3% of the year, we have about 78.5% of our revenue so far. And we have spent about 57.5% of our money, so we're again right on target. Um, our money market account, which is kind of our general account, we are about 209,000 less than we were last year. And as I mentioned before, that's to be expected because now we are putting money into our reserve accounts. And we are also working on paying our lease purchase debt obligation off more. So we're pulling, we're not just having money set in our money market, we're using that money as we should. Specified reserve accounts for a purpose and paying off our debt. And as you can see, if you look at our debt, we in the past year have paid about 200,000 from where we were the year before, rough, a little, what, probably nine percent, something like that. So we're getting there. And that's my report, Taylor.
Great, I thought going second would mean I have a lot to talk about, we've pretty much hit on a lot of it.
Efficiency.
I know, right, right? Um, so Taylor Anderson was talking about the strategic plan, that's one of about eight plans that we're working on. So we've been doing a lot of work with all of these plans. So there's the strategic plan, workforce development plan, quality improvement, performance management plan, um, community health improvement plan, our communications plan, emergency operations plan. So we're doing, doing a lot of things, um, but we're developing those and then I think that we're going to be presenting those, um, over the next few months. I think next month we plan to present the community health assessment, the CHAW and the community health improvement plan, the CHIP. Um, so that will be something to look forward to, um, which is one of the accreditation requirements, so.
So, so a quick question for you, Taylor. So are we on track to getting everything done before December?
Well, are you going to make me steal Rebecca's thunder?
I know, I was, I saw that in there.
If you want to wait, we can wait, I can wait, I'll be patient, that's fine.
Um, so we've gotten, we, we are, we are on target, we think. Um, barring major hiccups, it's when you presented the staff for all the work they didn't have a crowd of, they were also doing documentation for accreditation as well. I mean, we, we with them constantly, we, I think we said it like, we went from 28% done to 50% in a month. Um, wow, yeah, this is the biggest project we're managing, but, uh, we, we, we are working as diligently as we can get there and, uh, but.
So I do think it's important to note, like, doing all this accreditation stuff and trying to rework decades of policies and procedures and relook at everything. You know, and it's a health department-wide thing and there are certain divisions that are, you know, some folks are able to be able to do it and they're doing pretty good managing. But like, the clinic, this is back to school time, so we're expecting some pretty phenomenal things. Really want to shout out to our administrative services, so that's Cindy's division. You know, we went to pay velocity, which is going to be great, but it was not without some hiccups or like some really weird bodily functions because it may have been way more than hiccups. But we're expect, like, it's really taking a toll, like, there's a lot of things that have to be done. And then just the banking and all these things that are all fitting at once. I'm surprised Cindy talks to me because some days I would think she should be screaming at me, but just. But just the entire team.
Do we need to make that part of her job description?
She probably, she walks a lot and I just envisioned that every step is my face under her phone. And that's why she kind of walks.
Maybe that Palos City guy, I think, more so.
Yeah, Ivan and me. But.
I'm sure our director. And to go to your question, Dr. Kingsley. I'm sure our director is appropriately giving the staff the support and the resources they need. To meet the goal and will bring this in under the wire. I'll say it for the record because I think I can speak for everybody here. Anything this board can do to assist in this process. Andrew knows the board will support him and his leadership to bring this in under the wire. I have all the confidence in him, but I think the staff need to be aware that, don't hesitate to tell him what you need. Uh, and he, he's very capable and I think this board wants to bring this to fruition. And let me dovetail that a little bit because there's, it's, it's not just for the citizens of Black County because this process you all are going through. Is a process that ideally somehow way, shape or form needs to be replicated. In some of the rural counties that don't have the resources and your experiences. Your ideas on how to make something like that efficient, especially if we do form a Missouri local board of health. To find ways to get the counties with the resources who've gone through this, who may be able to mentor others along. The, the, the painful. Episodes you guys are wrestling with will not go to waste. And will be able to help other counties. And I think that's, those who work in the health department are there to serve others and I think this is part of it that we may be able to take the lessons learned. And find the efficiencies and come together as we brainstorm perhaps at a state level. How we can help the smaller boards be able to have a continuous quality improvement. Under the guise of accreditation.
That's a good point. I think that you bring that up, I think like we might do like an after action report type thing after we finish.
What a good idea, Taylor.
My goal, because that's the health department is we keep thinking, okay, we're gonna stop everything and do an accreditation day. My reason we've gotten as many documents done it is we made big sheets to figure out, okay, you have an hour here, what to do. And I'm hoping that we can make this simplified process and then, I don't wanna say take it on the road, but help out other counties. Uh, cause like when Taylor Anderson came in, she said, wow, I've never, I've only worked with rural health departments. This is amazing. It was the setup here and how official it is. So I went under health departments to be able to experience this as well, with even less resources. So yeah, that is my goal was to. Sit down and say like what worked and what didn't, but that's how we got so many documents done is like, how often do we need? Just for a short amount of time, it's like, okay, this, this, and then this. So yes, that's the goal was to not just close the door behind us, is to help other health departments achieve this as well. So.
But I think that is in our DNA and I know when we went up to Macon and had that meeting. Um, with what, seven or eight other health departments and just to kind of discuss some. And it ended not being just a sharing of ideas, more than us sharing just our things. But we actually have, um, the Randolph County Health Department is coming here on Monday. Because they are building a new building and they want some ideas and some guidance. And so Sharon Weisen and the administrator there is bringing like four of her teammates here. And we're meeting. Our leadership teams meeting to walk the building. We're going to kind of give a tour and then we're splitting up in our pairs to discuss what's important. But all that mentorship and all that, that is in our DNA. That is what we want to do. We, we know there's no lines. But for, you know, public health and we want everyone to succeed.
What part of the state is Randolph County? Just curious.
Overly.
Yeah.
And so like central Missouri above Columbia.
Outside of this meeting, I think there are lots of discussions and ideas that can be promulgated regarding our rural partners. And accreditation and lessons learned and I actually have. The plethora of thoughts to share with the group as we get there, but I wanted to make sure the group knows. This is a board that wants to support Andrew, wants to support you guys and I don't want any of our staff. Uh, uh, he does not run a department like that, but like feeling the sort of Damocles is hanging over us. Every Friday at four thirty feeling like we've got another hour and a half worth of work to do to meet our deadlines or something. You know, it's, it's, let's be healthy.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's, it, it work, work with him, but everybody isn't, I don't want the board to be perceived as, where are you guys? Don't we have it yet? Aren't you gonna make your deadline? No, that, and, and we're just curious to see if there's something we can do. To further support. So Taylor, you want to finish your report?
Yeah, thank you.
Remember, five o'clock is just another hour. I'll get talked to about that.
Um, as we already mentioned, we spent a lot of time on Kava and Kratom this month as well, as the past few months. Um, and then we're gonna be talking about hiring, we hired a new health educator, which is gonna be um, the personnel action later on. And we are gonna be talking about these emergency preparedness contracts as well. We already talked about the customer satisfaction survey and then Kripa. Our intern did do a health literacy presentation. I think Andrew mentioned that too. Um, so I did in July attend um, the NATURE three sixty, um, the National Association of City and County Health Officials. They put on a conference this year, it was in Anaheim, California. Um, they did a lot of sessions on workforce development. Um, how to uh, work with limited resources, social media. A lot of the topics were related to AI and how public health could use AI. Um, it was really good conference, very informative. Um, and then I also attended the new administrator training in Jefferson City. Um, which is put on by the state. So the first half of that was me and around twenty other new administrators, directors, deputy directors. Um, just giving information about all of the different things that the state provides. And then the second half of the meeting was the all-in meeting. So all of the health departments from around the state, and I don't think all of them were actually there, but. A good chunk of them, I think there was over a hundred um, attended and actually Andrew was there too. He didn't put that in your report. But again, really good training, really good to talk with some of those people. Tiffany Bayer was one of the big people who was putting that on, so. Very informative. Um, and then we already talked about strategic plan and policies. I, I think as far as highlights, um. Our health education did the back to school. Of our largest events. Um, so that was something that was additional in the report this time. And this year we had seven hundred and forty-seven people who attended. So a lot of staff time also went into that, setting that up. Um, especially our health education supervisor, we'll have health education division, but lots of other people came in and helped too. So I think that that was. Really good, successful event this year, um, as it is every year.
And how many people to previous year?
The previous year, I think it was around six hundred fifty. I don't have it off the top of my head. We should probably add that to this.
And we know we have volunteers running our vacuums and cleaning and trying to get everything set. Back up and return to normal. So it was. You know, the first year was a little rough. The second year was better and this year, I think with the new kind of workflow and stuff. Each year's been getting better and, you know, I thought they did a really good job of just. You know, leaving it like, you know, for those who know scouting, you know, leave it like you found it. It's not better. It's not better. So that's what they did and just really pleased with that partnership every year.
Any questions for me? That's good.
And all the FDA kratom and all of those documents were provided to uh, Deviant Kappa. For this meeting?
Yes, so Jen, we posted that out on.
I don't feel guilty at all about.
Jen sent it to them.
Yeah, that was it. Additional.
That everything that's in this packet right here is exactly the same as what's on the web.
And she did email them ahead of time and sent the link to that, yeah.
Hey, hey, Andrew, I, I lost the video for the, uh, what you show, all the slides. It popped off.
You're not seeing the screen being shared?
Yeah, it's not showing it anymore. It just popped off like about a minute ago.
We'll try to reset it. If not, I'll just.
Yep.
There we go.
There it is.
All right, Dustin.
All right, nothing too exciting, um, other than, you know, back to school. It's that time of year, so we've been busy with that, uh, assisting with the back to school fair. Uh, one cool thing we did do is we partnered with Gata Stratton from Beacon Health. She did a lunch and learn for staff, uh, talking about ADHD. So a lot of people haven't really interacted with those clientele as much, but you know, for a weight clinic as well as in a public health clinic. We do get to experience that from time to time. So it was a really informative uh, lunch and learn session, something we're trying to grow more, like having board lunch and learns from. Other uh, community partners. So it was really fun opportunity. Uh, a lot more staff showed up.
How many people?
I don't have a top, I'm at that rate now.
I'd say, so I should say it was probably about twenty people from our staff decided to come. I was surprised. I did not think we'd have that many people and we had some folks show up. But typically I would not think would go to a lunch and learn, but one of the. Some of the people, they just have a grandson, I think, been diagnosed with ADHD. So they had a really personal interest and so it was just kind of cool to be able to offer it and Gata did a great job. Uh, presenting, I thought. It was very interesting and it was kind of fun having all the, a lot of the team that we don't see all the time. And here eating and learning and asked great questions, very interactive. We have more of those scheduled and just kind of a different thing than we've had since I've been here anyway. Probably have done that in the past, but we haven't always been in one building either. So that's probably been difficult. So it was good.
Yeah, like I said, really good uh, conversations. I think it helped alleviate some like their questions and concerns the man had about it. So it, it was a really good time. For everyone. Um, we did roll out the patient satisfaction surveys, um, as Andrew discussed earlier and. Makes sense. The results are overwhelmingly positive for our clientele that we're seeing here. So. I had to give a huge shout out to our staff for just the customer service they provide as well as encouraging. Our uh, clients to come through and scan that QR code and fill out that survey for us.
Now, one thing we did discuss, Dr. Kingsley and I, is that someone comes in and they see Swope. What happens to that? So they actually have a dropdown. They would identify that they saw Swope. And then we would give Swope that information so that they can get that feedback. So it doesn't go in a black hole.
Yeah. WIC is pretty busy. They've been issuing like all the farmer's market benefits to some of their clients, uh, as well as uh. Uh, finalizing, rolling out the rest, the patient satisfaction surveys that are provided by the Missouri WIC Association. So it's separate from what we do here. Uh. Swope also, we, I had some of their survey results. I don't have the actual tallies of what they were ranked as. I was just giving the comments for it. Um, I think Dr. Kingsley made a comment earlier, not as stellar as what some of ours were. Um, I will note that uh, one person on the first mentioned about having long wait times. I'm assuming that was from the back to school fair. Um, this was Swope's first year participating in that with us here and they were providing physicals. Not sure what happened there one hundred percent, but uh, obviously the client was less than thrilled about it. Um, but looking at their numbers, this was probably their best month yet and seeing clientele, um, it matched what we had about a year ago. Um, at that time, like a year ago, actually, yeah, the strong numbers, we, a year ago around this time is whenever we stopped services in August. So we'll see. Um, so we don't have much to compare with them for the next couple of months, but in October, um, so the November board meeting. Will be able to see a full year and start comparing Swope to how they've grown since then and what their client numbers are kind of going to.
Can we talk about the, the Swope response on seven, ten, twenty-five? It says, I've already left a message for the compliance team regarding this particular visit and provider. So what, do you know what the actual issue was that they sent to the compliance team?
I haven't heard for sure about that. Um. I think a little communication I've had about that was, I think there was a, a, a similar comment in the previous month. That someone who is pretty disgruntled, was gonna try to come back again, um, and then kind of get issues on his return visit. And I think it's the same client. Uh, I'm waiting for confirmation on that. If I can follow up and look more into it for you.
So one of the things, I think on Monday, is it Dustin? We have a meeting with their, um. Facilities person because they want to walk through their wing with us. I think they're wanting to replace the uh, exam tables and do you know what else they want to?
I, I don't know all what they want, but I just know that exam tables were mentioned by uh, their clinic manager had mentioned that. It seemed like they had some other things they were thinking about too. But they want to uh, uh, walk through the facility and kind of see what all was there and what they wanted to purchase and upgrade.
So we'll just have to determine what we are going to keep. You know, there, there probably will be some exam tables that will just move over to our side. And then there'll be some stuff we'll get rid of, but they are just wanting to upgrade their equipment.
I, I would suggest. Go ahead.
Go ahead. You're probably gonna say the same thing I was gonna say. If we switch out from Swope to somebody else and they take all the exam tables with them. We don't want to throw the ones away that we have. That would be kind of foolish.
There doesn't seem to be a shortage of them. We got all these donated to us.
It'll cost money to get new ones.
Yeah, before anything is discarded, I, I know that there's probably opportunities in other health departments in rural areas of the state. That might uh, take our throwaways and feel their upgrades to what they have. So I. Knowing Andrew as well as I do, none of this stuff will be thrown out and. We'll, we'll wait and see what Swope deems that they need and we'll work with them.
And that is what we would do.
Of course.
Cause we were given them, so we would.
All right.
So we'll log in before anyone has any questions.
Okay, accreditation. So. Uh, it's been a busy month. We've been really working hard to make this process easier. Again, we went up from twenty-eight percent of, of our. Documents ready to go to fifty percent. A lot of the rest of them, yes. That, and that was all hands on deck thing. This is not the Rebecca show. Um, so, you know, again, just kind of meeting with everybody and figuring out what we have and where and how to best do it. It's been really helpful. Everyone's been jumping in. Um, and um, yeah, so there's what we have for that and the strategic plan that you guys just voted on. That layout is now our template for all of our plans that we're hoping to have that uniformity as well. Um, so for our quality improvement, we're working on uh, finishing up our quality improvement plan and having that performance management system so we can monitor our programs. What's effective, what's sufficient, what serves the people and what's not. Um, and the workforce development uh, plan, we're still working on that as well. Been working with a PhD student to kind of help us develop that as well. Um.
Scrolling down.
So can you scroll back up real quick? One thing I did want to mention. Under Rebecca, this chart seems to be way better than when Taylor used to do.
But it was, Taylor helped, you know, guide me and, and read my things.
I didn't ask for your feedback.
This is what I'm gonna add.
I'm gonna call your wife and make sure your life insurance is paid up, buddy.
I should say that when she's not standing.
Oh, Lord. Oh, you're living dangerous, brother. Please go on.
So, um, that's where we are with that. Obviously, we're continuing to keep that going and as things get done, actually, big jumps should happen. Uh, some things relate, but that's, you're there. Um, big thing in the emergency management is we, uh, the trailer that we've been trying to get to Kingston Health Department is finally there. Oh, uh, Dawn worked gosh months to get that one signature that she needed from somebody. To get it to they could come take it, so they had taken that trailer.
I think the board approved that transfer either in January or February.
That was not filled out for her and she continued to hide it. So there you go. Um, so I appreciate her hard work on that. Uh, and that uses the diseases we're looking at for distracting for this month and um. Any other questions? I mean, most of my stuff has been cut. any other questions? I mean, most of my stuff has been covered. If you have any questions, uh, good work.
So one thing I'll mention just about, and it happened this weekend, past weekend, but, you know, what some of our health department duties jurisdiction is a big deal and for Platte County, we share jurisdiction with Kansas City. So if anything's in Kansas City, Missouri proper, sometimes looking at the address is very important. So like if a restaurant is in Kansas City, Missouri proper, we would not inspect that. That would go to Kansas City. Um, it's the same for disease surveillance and disease investigation. We got a call about a possible measles exposure on an airplane over the weekend and it ended up being someone who's a Platte County resident, but they live in Kansas City, Missouri proper. We got to educate the state that that is a Kansas City, Missouri resident, not, or that's a Kansas City, Missouri investigation, not ours. So that was kind of fun.
They were reporting with COVID that happened too.
Yes, absolutely.
I was calling those.
Yes.
Different areas. Yeah.
But when I was telling the on-call officer, that was my first job in public health was working at the Kansas City Health Department and disease investigation because she said, oh, I feel bad for them. And I said, well, that was my first job. I was on the other side plenty, so I don't feel bad.
Yeah.
Um, financial, Ashley, go to finance committee?
Uh, finance committee could be short and sweet. Uh, we met on Tuesday, August 12th. Um, we had an in-service on the buy board organization, purchasing cooperative, whereas we agreed to utilize this service where we can get, um, it's a public, a public domain, schools, health departments can utilize this and then, uh, purchase large items or smaller items. You may get them for less, less money. The profit that they make goes back to the public schools. Um, I don't know. What else can I say about it?
Yeah, it's basically just cooperative purchasing. So it has the strength of competitive bidding behind it. And so.
Better pricing and.
You know, and we actually have utilized several different, you know, we look at several systems like that and we basically just buy whatever's cheapest, but it keeps us on certain things from having to put everything out for bid and creating bid specs. It's cheaper and faster than when you have the state of Oregon doing a national search, they're going to get better pricing than Platte County, Missouri, doing something that reaches three states. So buy board is a similar kind of, um, thing. Think the other thing was just, the big decision was, it wasn't really much of a decision, but it was just rolling our, um, reserve account proceeds back into the reserve accounts. We just needed to make sure.
And I thought we were also maybe, we've talked about maybe looking at some of the other.
I think next month we're going to talk about.
Higher percentages.
Do some of our regular money market funds and the most of. Cindy, do you have anything?
The show thing I had was, um, Heidi Lucky, who's our coordinator, and I both attended a leadership training, three-day leadership training in July in Jersey and it was very good.
And you told me the scale of leadership trainings you want to.
It was the best one I've ever been.
Wow, awesome.
And so I think that is what Dan had said when he had went, him and I went together. Now, you have not gone.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
So everyone except Rebecca on the staff has gone, but we are really monopolizing that state money. Our department has sent like seven people now and we're not paying for it and it's like a $3,000 course or something. So pays to no Tiffany.
And the instructors know Andrew. Oh, so he must have made an impression when he went.
There's no doubt about him making an impression. Dullible markers stay.
He was quiet the whole time.
Yes, I just sat and listened.
Did he have a pulse?
All right, so need to review and approve the bills?
Uh, Susan, is everything in order to your satisfaction on the bills?
It is. So I make a, I'll make a motion that we pay, uh, the bills of July 17th to August 21st.
I'll second it.
All right, no further discussion. Do a roll call vote. Dr. Kingsley?
Yes.
Susan?
Susan Cole, yes.
Michael Chapey, yes.
Zach Ronkey, yes.
Motion passes.
Any fee resolutions?
There are.
Yeah. Did you read your packet? Oh. I'm having fun.
So I didn't want to read them all, so you all have them in front of you.
And I don't have, so.
Let's, uh, go ahead and scroll down. I think they speak for themselves as I read them. Uh, look at them. Are they in the packet there on new business?
They're not.
They're not. They didn't make them.
They were. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to a, any discussion about the fee resolutions here, uh, that are in front of us, um, on the updates for the vaccines and the most recent expense for, well, I, I'm gonna make a comment about that here in a minute, um, Ms. Kathy Wright. But, uh, if there's no discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve the, uh, fee resolution updates.
And Dr. Kingsley, I, uh, just texted you a picture of it.
Okay.
Uh, Cindy, anything jumping out that I, I didn't go line by line, anything that has gone up substantially that should be an eyebrow razor for us?
Um, HPV, I think was one of the bigger ones. I see that.
These are.
In the shingles.
$60.
And just for my clarification, when we have folks who are in between insurances who are needing these items.
If they're.
If they meet the criteria, they are covered by.
317, if it's available.
Okay.
Okay. None of those are really big, big increases. Wow.
Well, is what it is.
Yeah.
It is what it is. It's true.
We don't really have that many that end up paying for these.
Negotiating.
They, they don't.
I mean, most people that are getting these vaccines are either insurance or supported by 317 or BFC.
Okay. And before we move to adopt this, I just would throw out that if, if things like this seem to be getting out of hand, then we might have a brainstorming session about putting together a co-op, perhaps statewide. Are we, do we purchase as a state? Do we get the economies of scale of purchasing like in a co-op?
Yeah, it's all purchased under a state contract.
Okay, thank you.
But this is, this is state contracted prices right here, huh?
Yeah.
Wow.
So much Mike.
Who negotiates that, dude?
Yeah, we need to find, find a better negotiator.
Yeah, we got bigger fish to fry. All right, in the interest of time, uh, I would make a motion to adopt a fee resolution.
The state of Missouri has a whole procurement of our.
All right. Sorry about that.
I'll be looking.
But as the prices go up, the prices go up for everyone.
I, uh, make a motion that we adopt the fee resolution updates as presented.
Seconded. All right, roll call. Dr. Kingsley?
Yes.
Susan Cole, yes.
Michael Chapey, yes.
Right, um, I think memory serves, we have, uh, new hire. Or we'll get to the, oh, we've got a few things for Dustin to get approved.
Yes.
Yes.
Actually, just one with me, so, um, the WIC Local Agency Nutrition Services contract. So this is a contract we get each year. Um, the, for contracts, uh, for October 1st through September 30th, 2026, it increases by about 10,000, by about $11,000, um, to $380,727. Uh, this money helps fund a lot of like the costs of the WIC program and offering it here, about 75% of it. So we do put it to really good use and does help provide that service here.
Very good. Uh, I'll make a motion to move to authorize the director to sign the WIC Local Agency Nutrition Services contract with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for a period of October 1st, 2025 through September 30th, 2026.
I'll second that.
Move to roll call, Dr. Kingsley?
Yes.
Susan Cole, yes.
Michael Chapey, yes. Zach Ronkey, yes.
Motion passes. Um, the emergency preparedness contracts, uh, ready to have a chance to look at that? Any questions? Then, I mean, I, I'll move to authorize the director to sign the PHEP and CRI contracts with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for a period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026.
Seconded.
Roll call, Dr. Kingsley?
Yes.
Susan Cole, yes.
Michael Chapey, yes. Zach Ronkey, yes.
Motion passes.
One more.
Strategic Highway Safety Plan contract. Has everybody had a chance to review that adequately?
Yes.
All right, then I'd entertain a motion. Or any further discussion on it? Hearing none?
I'll move to authorize the director to sign the Strategic Highway Safety Plan contract with Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026.
Seconded.
Do a vote. Dr. Kingsley?
Yes.
Susan Cole, yes.
Michael Chapey, yes. Zach Ronkey, yes.
Motion passed.
I suppose you want me to talk about this, right? So Midwest Public Risk is where we get our liability insurance, our health insurance for our staff. It basically is a government cooperative, so we have some economies of scale, so we can be competitive when we are buying. And essentially every year they have a conference. Last year, Taylor and I went. Um, and it was in Lanesa, so it was very exciting to be in Lanesa. Uh, we actually both stayed overnight because it starts early and neither, we're both lazy and didn't want, and they paid for the room. So we didn't want to break the traffic. Uh, but anyway, this year it's in Branson and they will pay for the member representative, which is me. They will pay for two staff members, um, Cindy and then Paige Hyatt are going. And then they will pay for a board member if there's any board members that wishes to attend. Uh, it kind of makes sense if Susan, you wanted to go because you're on the finance committee, it probably makes sense if you wanted to attend. If you didn't want to attend, any board member could attend, but I'll leave that up to the board.
Well. Yeah, Andrew and I already talked about it and I thought Susan should get first dibs and then after that it's whoever's interested.
I need to kind of look at my calendar and get back with you.
Absolutely agree that Susan be most appropriate and hopefully it's, you can have time in your schedule for it.
And it, so I will say, Dr. Kingsley kind of asked me, what's the conference about? So there, it really is geared towards, you know, minimizing loss. So whatever that is, it's going to be workman's comp. It's going to be, you know, a lot of it's kind of just good business practices and reducing risk, whatever that might be. It can be facility type stuff, you know, the agenda is online, but it's usually sending, usually they have some pretty good speakers, um, and it's usually a pretty good conference. And I will say Branson, that time of year is beautiful.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Any other business?
Personnel. Personnel action. I say Susan, Susan, if you, if, if you don't know if you can go or you, you can't go. I can only go for like the 22nd and then I would have to leave on the 23rd. So I could go, but I wouldn't do the full thing. So if somebody else is the better choice, they could do the whole thing. They should, then I, I will acquiesce to them. So Susan gets first dibs and after that whoever can do the full thing would be ideal.
Yeah.
Susan will actually be, uh, out of town. Alumni Association event that weekend, so not be available for it.
How about this? Let, let's go ahead and get our business done and then on the board thing, if this, let me and, um, him be aware if you're not able to attend and that'd be monkey on us.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a personnel action, uh, Cheyenne Brunkow, did I pronounce that correctly? All right, has been hired at full-time health educator effective August 4th, 2025. She will be at a scale step 13M, 4B salary starting at $30.58 per hour. Uh, would entertain a motion to approve this action.
I'd like to move, we approve this action.
I'll second that.
Roll call, Dr. Kingsley?
Yes.
Susan Cole, yes.
Michael Chapey, yes. Zach Ronkey, yes.
And we are excited to have her. I think her last public health gig was at ADHD Kansas Department of Health and Environment. And she does have her master's in public health, um, which I had forgotten. So I'm publicly telling everyone I now remember, but she hasn't. So if she watches us, she knows I know now.
She seems like she'll be a great addition to the team. She's taken over her Rebecca's previous role.
Any other new business, any board member wishes to bring up at this time?
Um, I guess for our next meeting that we have, the, 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 the special meeting next week or whatever, that is basically going to be regarding the tax levy. Is that correct, Andrew?
That's the only thing it's about. So we have to post that. So a lot of things for the board, we only have to post 24 hours. So if we would post something regarding money, we just have to do 24 hours notice. But for the tax levy, we actually have to post it for seven days. And so that's why we couldn't do it tonight. We just got that information. I'm trying to think what day today is. So we just got it on. We posted yesterday or the day before?
Yeah, it's probably Tuesday.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's why.
And then just.
And then we had stuff we had to do with it.
Okay. All right.
But.
Look forward to it.
But it's just keeping it the same as the request.
All right, anything else?
Yeah, lots of things assigned. I need to face it. I'm, I'm moving it down just in a minute.
We want to address the.
Kathy's.
Oh, yes, thank you. I didn't mention that. Um, I'd like to, I don't know the most appropriate way to do this as far as recognizing service. The former Board of Trustee member of 34 years, is that correct? 36?
Yeah.
Uh, service to your county. I think we all need to, to, I, I, I'd like to just take a moment and, uh, recognize that what we are trying to do, someone else did for 36 years. And that takes an incredible amount of dedication and selfless sacrifice. I don't know if we should consider for our next meeting a resolution or some sort of acknowledgement of that kind of service, but I, I'm glad that the, uh, Acknowledgment of that kind of service, but I I'm glad that the uh. Administrative leadership has uh gone ahead to. Was it a a flat of flowers or?
We, so the family had requested donations to her church in Platte City. So we had sent a hundred dollar donation in her name. Which was approved tonight, so.
Great, yep.
I think, well, kind of piggybacking on what you're saying, Mike, is that 36 years of. Service, which includes going to meetings, outside of meetings, going, never getting paid a dime, right? This is all purely volunteer. That's pretty incredible. So. I I applaud all the work that she did.
So. And and I I would entertain any suggestions between now and next month's meeting, if there's something that is more appropriate, if. If appropriate at all to do beyond what we've done so far to recognizing that kind of service to our county. Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, motion in the meeting.
Second. Roll call. Jeff?
Dr. Kingsley says yes.
Susan Cole, yes.
Michael Chape, yes. Zach Cronkies, yes.
Hey, everybody. Thank you. Sorry I wasn't there. I'm at work, so. All right, have a good night, everybody.